Process really began much earlier than, you know, the summer or even earlier than 2013. So what our attempt to do is give you a background of where we are, give you a flavor of a bit of the collaboration that's occurred between the city administration and the school administration. And I have to commend the school staff of how they've worked diligently with my staff to make sure that we were building schools that are really 21st century learning experiences. And we'll talk a bit about construction costs. And then Ron will give you some highlights of the schools. I think a lot of the times we've been discussing, you know, money and not necessarily discussing what's in these schools. And I hope that by the end of this presentation, it will be schools that everybody can be proud of. Now council priorities, as you know, there are six priorities that the council approved back in September 2011. And when you start to think about schools, you could probably hit all six priorities. But it's very clear that under lifelong learning, economic vitality and workforce development at home here. So the background, I think, is important. Really, in 2006, the school system commissioned a study, the MGT study, that had a view or review, analysis of the school buildings. So we've had a lot of discussions about schools, whether it's academics, their standards of learning, things of that nature. But this was specifically locked into the school infrastructure. So by the time, at the end of that study, which was August 2007, the analysis, the MGT analysis concluded that there was more than $800 million of infrastructure needs in the school system. We discussed it, the council discussed it. We also started to talk about some of our buildings and some of the infrastructure needs. But locking into the school system, it was very clear, based on that study, that there needed to be, the buildings needed to be addressed. So in 2010, after the discussion deliberations, the council, you know, buy-in, the mayor, even in his state of the city address, talked about having five schools over a short period of time. So that goes back to 2010. In 2011, much like the court complex, over time, I think it was at least six different budgets that the council voted on. The way that the city funded these big, big projects, so you don't have a project bigger in the history of the city than the courthouse, $122 million project. So again, we use our strong credit ratings and we borrow money, we go out on the bond market. But in order to do that, over years, we take some of the capacity that we have in our capital improvement plan and we set it aside for a specific purpose. So starting in 2011, we started, the council started to set aside a portion of the capital improvement plan just for construction of these five schools. You will recall in 2013, to try to expedite the process, because there wasn't enough capacity in the capital improvement plan over the five-year period to do five schools, there was actually a two-cent increase on the real estate that was dedicated solely to schools. So the fund was constructed, that was the construction, technology and infrastructure fund. So those two pennies can't go towards teacher salaries, or those two pennies can't come back to the city. They must be set aside for school construction. After that, the council and the school board agreed that the city would take the lead on school construction. So in this collaborative process, which started in 2013, the school system, the administration and the city started to work through this PPEA process to see how we can get schools that have all of the learning environment that's necessary for those 21st century learning environments. A part of that team was from the city side, Ron and Sabrina, as well as our chief engineer, finance director and the director of public works. We also had assistance from the city attorney staff. And then in the Norfolk Public Schools, there was Dr. Simmons, who's with us tonight, as well as Dr. Zbigniew, their CFO and their senior director of facilities. But also, in order to try to get this right, the team had assistance from architects that understood both programming for schools as well as school construction. I will say that neither Dr. King nor I sat on this team, but we did get briefings from time to time. They met for over 16 months and they had 30 meetings. So in order to try to get this right, there was a lot of time and effort that was put into it. In terms of community engagement, there was student focus groups, there were teacher, principal onsite focus groups, there was PPEA, web page, online surveys and informal flyers. You know, we actually have input from a student focus group at Campus Stella. And I think there's going to be a drawing behind me that really talks about what a school could look like from having a Baskin Robbins on the first floor to, you know, the gym and the library. So I will say that it was, it was great, the feedback that was received. But also, we had community engagement in terms of 10 meetings with the public as it related to each of the five schools, two meetings each. And that was in the May and June timeframe. We had more than 400 attendees and there was also a survey with over 800 responses. So I think it's important to try to put in perspective this heavy lift. If you start to go back in time and look at the schools that have been recently constructed as well as those that are planned, and I think those got to start being a gold right. So we can go back to 2002, where we began, you know, construction on Norview High, all the way to Crossroads, which opened in 2012. So that's four schools that basically took a decade, a decade for us to build, renovate. And mainly because of this process of having to set aside a portion of our capacity for a specific purpose. If you, you know, I could use, for example, and sometimes the cost of the schools increased. For instance, Coleman Place is a great example. We started off thinking that it would be a $13 million school. And by the time we were finished, it was about a $22 million school. But again, we thought that if we could get everybody around the table, both the construction experts as well as the school programming experts, we could come up with a better process. So the PPA committee addressed building five new schools. What's interesting, I believe when we started counting, we started counting Crossroads as the first one of those five schools that actually opened in 2012. And I will tell you that, so we thought, well, we have four more to go. But then we received an opportunity for Camp Allen. And we were able to get 80 cents on the dollar to build Camp Allen School. So when we start to talk about five schools, we do Campus Stella, the K through A, Broad Creek, pre-K to five, Larchmont, pre-K to five, Ocean View, K to five, and Camp Allen, which came later in the game, but really because there was this opportunity to force to build a school with only putting 20 cents on the dollar. So where are we right now? The financial commitment we had for the five schools, again, socking away money over time, up until the current fiscal year, there was approximately a little over $38 million set aside. I can recall that from time to time, Councilman Riddick would ask me about the $2.3 million related to Campus Stella, was that a part of that number? Yes, it is. So even though the council started setting aside money in 2011, previously, there was a little over $2 million set aside specifically for Campus Stella. So all of that is in the previous authorization. The budget that you approved July 1 of this year has FY 2015, which is our current year, which has another $27 million set aside for those five schools. But then to get it done, we set aside $12 million in '16, a portion in '17, a portion in '18, a portion in '19, with the thought process being, well, we can build a couple of schools and you can set up money for the planning, the construction in one year and the furniture and fixtures in another year. So between now and 2019, the concept would be to build those five schools. Well, then we have the reality check, that while we had a little over $126 million set aside over this five-year period, including previous allocations, allotments, the cost that we were at at the beginning of the month was almost $11 million more than the appropriation authority that the council had set aside over that five-year period. So we had to, one, get within that appropriation authority or significantly cut the capital improvement plan in the out years. And that could be funding for neighborhoods, we have a couple of fire stations in there. And we just didn't think that that would be a great position to come back to you today saying that we could build schools, but we can't do a bunch of other things. So we had to close the gap. So this is where we are in terms of the funding that's related to the schools. We were proposing to make this a phase one and phase two. So we will, tonight, we're proposing to build five schools, four of them in phase one, and Camp Allen being in phase two. So it's not, so I can't say not, not. It doesn't mean that we're not going to do Camp Allen. But Camp Allen, with that reimbursement from the federal government, is really a different animal. It's reimbursable, you have to track every dollar. We said, let's make this neat and clean and let's deal, let's address the first four schools in phase one, get through that, and then as we go through phase two, still in that five-year CIP, address Camp Allen. So how do we do that? Okay. The cost, as we started off saying that we needed to, we were about $11 million off. The first thing we did, by taking Camp Allen out of the first phase, still being committed to it, we didn't have roughly 28, almost $29 million of authority that we had to have for Camp Allen. Yes, you get 80 cents on the dollar, but still, that was almost $6 million of local funds only. So by moving Camp Allen to phase two, we were able to pick up that local match, almost $6 million, and apply it to the first four schools. Outside of that, what we did was we did some value engineering, which is worth a couple of million dollars. And then the electricity was a part of this project. And we said, let's move it from a capital expense to operating expense and spread it over three years. And that was worth about a million. So this guaranteed maximum price, which is the point in time where we're hoping that council will allow us to move forward, is $101 million, 101.1 million. The resources, by taking Camp Allen out, and once I account for any of the money that we have spent already in terms of our interim agreement, I was about $2 million short in terms of making this match. To make up those $2 million, we have one project in the CIP, which was Terminal Boulevard, and it's the paving of all lanes of Terminal Boulevard. It was a 50/50 match with the state. So we would put up $3.5 million, the state would put up $3.5 million. There's been a lot of discussions with the mayor and the secretary of transportation. And what has occurred is that the state is willing to pick up all of that. We think it's going to be more than $7 million. They're going to pick up all except for 1.75 million of it. So that frees up 1.75 million. So it's not taking anything out of the CIP, Terminal Boulevard's still going to be paved all lanes. And that leaves me a couple hundred thousand dollars. And in that construction, technology and infrastructure fund, the way that we've been paying the debt, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars that can cover that. So what you have before you tonight in terms of making this work is that we have a guaranteed maximum price of a little over $101 million. We have the resources to do it, which we don't have to alter any project in the capital improvement plan. Camp Allen would not be a part of phase one, but phase two, still committed to that. Whatever budget I, we present to you next March, April, we'll have Camp Allen in it. So we're not retreating from that at all. And that's the financing piece. But I think that's not the cool stuff, all right?
Mark, I should want to-
Yes?
Does the federal government, that money does, I mean, they don't, they're okay with backing that up?
Yeah, the way that we had this spread out in the capital improvement plan, I would need to get into 2016 anyway for all of the funding authorities, so-
But I'm fine with that, but we're not endangering, they're putting 80% funding-
Right, because the way that we're addressing this, it's, nothing has changed. We're just moving these first four forward now. The good news is, we talked about those four schools earlier in that diagram that took us a decade to build all four of them, to get the funding. Right now, these four schools, we believe, well, we have a plan in place that can get them all built within three years. So if we went back to the capital improvement plan, it would have been 2019, before we could get all the schools built. So this accelerates it and we're able to get them all built by 2017.
Yes, Ken. Who came up with the schedule for the schools and when they were going to break ground? And the reason why I'm asking, I'm happy that it's accelerated, but somehow Ocean View got put back on the list. And I asked this a year and a half ago. It's the last school to be started, but it is the one school that is hurting the transformation initiative in Norfolk, because they're supposed to be converting Willoughby into an early childhood center. And they're waiting on the new Ocean View to open so that they can move the Willoughby kids in there. And they need more preschool classes. And so now you've put that on there, not only that, but you've kicked the baseball kids off the fields, okay? Because we thought construction was going to happen earlier and there are three baseball fields going back there, so now we're waiting, let's let them play then. I, that's what, I don't understand where this deadline came from. And, you know, and out of respect to Mamie, and I know she gets upset when I go after Broad Creek stuff, that school was never on the original list. It got added on, just like Campus Stella did, because I've already proven that with MGT. And those two schools got bumped all the way up on the list, ahead of Larchmont and Ocean View, which were supposed to be done sooner than the schools. Now, they went back and made an adjustment with Larchmont, it was in phase two, but Ocean View was, I don't know if Ocean View can make it another three years. Have you been to the school?
Yes.
And they're, they're not putting money into it because knowing that it's going to get torn down, they're not, I don't know if it can make it until December of 2017. And I do have concerns about where this timeline came from, how the priority was made. And I would think that the transformation initiative that the school board has presented should override some of the other stuff, politics or whatever came into this.
Sure. Okay, so, Councilor Spiegel, I'm going to try my best to, and Ron, if I mess this up, you tell me, okay? So the, the schools, where they are in the priority, one, two, three, or four, if you bear with me for a second, is not as important right now as our ability to pay for them. So if we, if we take, somewhere in here, some school is going to open in late December 2017, whether it's school one, two, three, or four. So somewhere in there, it's our ability to pay for this. As Sabrina's going to present later, it's a very different process that we're doing moving forward with this line of credit, because we need to be nimble enough that when the bills come in to pay them, as opposed to running up to New York two or three times a year trying to borrow money. So some of the schedule, schools aside for now, has to do with the financing. I'm not sure that I've had a-
It's the cheapest school.
Yeah.
Out of the four of them, that's the least expensive of them. I think it's the least expensive school. It's the one school, you got no complaints from the community-
Right.
-about what was happening there. And it's the oldest building, well, Larchmont is pretty much there.
Yeah, and-
I just don't understand. I, you know, I'm not just saying it because I represent, I don't even represent where Ocean View is. That's you, Andy. But I, I'm concerned that it is, and I'm also worried about construction costs going up when we get to that phase, if something changes in the economy.
Right. So the good news is guaranteed maximum price is very different than what we've done in the past, which is Willoughby, with a bunch of change orders. So once we lock into the price, the price is the price. I'm just not sure that we've had a schedule that didn't have Larchmont four.
Never heard anything to the contrary. I've asked every year, in fact, when it was presented in the budget, you guys put, and I was told they were just in alphabetical order, except for Campus Stella, since it was being torn down, and that they were all going to basically start at the same time. That is what this administration has told me from the very beginning. And I'm hot right now, looking at the schedule, that that school's not going to open until December of 2017, after what I know about the plans with Willoughby and also the baseball fields that are over there. This does not make sense to me, and I thought that was one of the reasons why we have one builder, is because it is cheaper to start them and do them around the same time. But that spread is a little bit bigger than what I thought it was going to be. And I asked that specifically, what the order was, and I was told that, I was told something different than what's up there on that slide.
I just don't know that I've ever heard anything of this being-
All I can say is that the PPA team has had this, this has been the conceptual order. Again, the phasing has to do in part with financing or the ability to construct, a combination of those. We've never heard anything to the contrary. And I'm not sure who gave you the answer, but this has been the schedule as far as sequential order.
I know the Broad Creek school from, excuse me, being here, and I apologize, I'm losing my voice here today, was because of land. The space was just available.
There's land?
We could build the school and there was, we didn't have to move children or anything.
You don't have to move children in Ocean View.
We're not moving-
You don't move any children, any of them?
We haven't children, any of them.
You're building it behind Ocean View.
In Campus Stella, we had to move children.
I had not heard this argument about the transformation plan. But I thought the idea was, the school's administration made the academic recommendations, we did the building. So what did school board or administration tell us about the order as far, as far as trying to get the transformation initiative done?
Sure.
Tommy, are you aware of this?
Sure.
Has this come out from them?
We did have a briefing last Friday with the team, both Dr. King and me, last Friday, and there was no concern about the schedule.
Tommy, you know, I knew this would be some concern. I think this is really the school boards. Dr. King, Dr. Houston have said this is what they would, the schedule, that they would prefer. And that doesn't make the decision, but that's, that's what they said they would prefer.
We've been talking about this for almost two years, and this is the first time a schedule of any type of order of schools has come out and presented to us, and it's the day that we're basically voting on it. And even the way the community forums were done, it never discussed that this was going to be staggered this way. And maybe it's my ignorance with how building is done, but I'm telling you that, in knowing how politics work, that got Broad Creek even on the list before Mamie Johnson was even on council. And now all of a sudden, that school has jumped all the way up to number two on the list. That really does bother me. If you look at the studies and the conditions of those buildings, I don't know how much longer Ocean View and Larchmont even can last.
Not Larchmont even, Larchmont and Ocean View.
Ocean View.
No even about it.
These, Broad Creek does not have the same issues as these two schools have.
Well, none of them have the same issues.
So I guess the strongest conviction I can see with this is that this is with guidance from the superintendent and the chair of the school board, that these are, this is the order. So I don't know what else to do other than take that as the gospel in terms of how we move forward.
What you've told me, I always understood that these would all be built, as Tommy said, near simultaneously. And I guess this is probably as near simultaneous as one can do. And is that because of the construction issues that Steve Ballard brings, or is it because of the financing issues that we have? Which is it?
Sure, it's a, it's a combination, but the bigger piece is the financing. So, so remember, we were going to build these all by 2019. So we're two years earlier. And again, that's a lot to do with the ability for this line of credit that you'll hear about in a little bit. But also, you know, and I won't speak for Steve, who's in the room, we didn't contemplate having shovels, four shovels in the ground in December, in next month, in building four schools.
Well, I could see, I don't have a problem with December 2014 or March 2015. I think the issue is that we've got March 2016 and June 2016. That seems to be the, that, you know, we're so, we're beginning those so much later.
Well, I think that he's, Andy already expressed to us that it's the financing. So if we're dealing with financing, then what we need to deal with is the order of that, those schools consistent with the financing. And I would ask that this should be, if, I'd like to hear from the administration and the school board, if this supports their transformation, what's it called, initiative? And if it supports their view of the capability of these schools to continue, you know what I mean, to function. And if they say that it does, then I would support it. But I just need to hear that. And Tommy, you obviously are hearing otherwise.
I mean, Willoughby is down to 155 kids in a school building, but they cannot move into Ocean View because Ocean View is at capacity now.
Right.
And it makes sense to me that that building-
Well, we also have kids moved in Broad Creek and Campus Stella, too, so-
There's no purpose of that remaining open as an elementary school.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, so what do the people that run the school systems tell you about that?
I don't know, it's never been discussed publicly.
So it's your, it's your concern now.
It's what I've been asking for two years. Two years I've been asking about the order of this. And I was told last time it was alphabetical, and that it didn't mean anything, what order. When you presented that budget book, Marcus, I asked, is this mean that this is the order they're in? And I was told, no, it is alphabetical.
What are the-
Broad Creek, Larchmont, Ocean View.
Are they all designed, I know Campus Stella's obviously ahead, proportionally, are they all at 30, 30 or 35% construction drawings now?
They're all in the same place, yes.
Or are they, they're all at the same point now?
Outside of Campus Stella, yes.
Outside of Campus Stella. If it was the will of the council to switch around, they could, correct? And they're, they're no?
That is, we can discuss with, with the developer, the ability to interchange one of the other schools and see whether or not, what that does. We don't, we don't know at this point whether or not, because in part, the subcontractors in bidding has been, has been set up for a flow built on this. The transformation initiative was not ever brought up as an issue of any complexity of the, at all during the 30-some meetings that we had over the 16 months, so.
We had a meeting where you had it laid out, the calendar, didn't we?
Yeah, that last, that last schedule was the interim agreement development.
Right. And was it, were these, were these how the schools were divided up?
Yeah.
In this manner, in this-
That was a design schedule.
Right. But it seemed to take us through the, through today.
What's the population at Ocean View?
650.
600. And the Calvera schools that are on Little Creek Road, the least-
It hasn't been leased yet.
No, I mean, how much, which one of those schools could accommodate that? Are you interested, are you worried about the safety at Ocean View?
I just know from personal experience that there's not going to be any money put into that building unless it's something major.
Right.
I mean, if you want an example, the principal was walking down the hall and a kid was standing underneath a drip with his mouth open, drinking the water from a pipe that was leaking in the hallway. He asked him what he was doing, he said he was thirsty. I mean, and it was like a rusty lead pipe up there. I'm just saying, you're not going to put money, it's in the annex section.
Tommy, are you asking, I mean, do you move up?
No, I'm just, I am, well, I want it to be done based off of what the school system needs and what's best for the kids. And I just have a concern that I know the shape of Ocean View and Larchmont and those buildings and what they're in, I just don't know how much longer they're going to last. I understand Campus Stella is demolished and you've got to move forward with that. But there's no difference between starting Broad Creek, Ocean View and Larchmont, other than where is the biggest need in this? And nobody, Broad Creek is adding 200 choice seats into their schools- And nobody, Broad Creek is adding 200 choice seats into their school, from, it's my understanding, or 100 choice seats to go there. But you're taking a whole exist, there's no choice seats at Ocean View because you're merging Willoughby into that school. I just, I wanted an honest answer, and this is the first time that I've seen this. And it's just upsetting to me that other schools have jumped up on a list, when you go back to that, actually, you can go back even further than that, that Ocean View and Larchmont have always been higher up on the list than any other school before Crossroads was, was done.
I don't think it was higher than Camp Estella, Camp Estella had been there.
It was, because I got into that argument with Southside, so I had to send that data to them.
I mean, and the data you sent to them came from the, what study?
The 2008 MGT study.
Well, see, Camp Estella was beyond that, you know. But I guess my question, is your concern with Ocean View, the safety and the durability of the building? And if that's the case, what would it cost to rent one of the Calvary schools and to bus those children there to make sure that they are safe?
Well, we've already talked about the Calvary school because it's on the market.
The community in Ocean View is not going to.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a long way to go, Paul.
It is a long way.
To council speaker, to your point, you're exactly right. If we opened up that 2007 study, it would have Ocean View right at the top, and it would have Larchmont also.
Actually, Tidewater Park was before even Larchmont.
Right. So, as Councilman Riddick also said, that even before we started to store away money, starting in 2011 for these five schools, there was money previously for Camp Estella. So, Camp Estella had always been at, at the top. You know, I'll say it again, that there's been no message from the school administration other than these five in this particular order. As a matter of fact, there was, you know, confirmation that isn't this the order? So, I think, as Dr. Willey has said, is that if the plan and the financing is fine with the council, and I'm not sure what economy is the scale that the developer has, but if it means, you know, moving one school in front of another school still on the schedule, I think that that is something that could be achieved, but there would be something that would be, you know, to the council.
Why is there such a big gap between the start of Broad Creek and Larchmont, but then a smaller gap between Larchmont and Ocean View?
So, it would, too.
Right, but I understand that. So.
Financing.
So, that's the financing piece.
It's financing. We actually started off in, in 2018, being much more comfortable, and I knew 2018 wasn't going to work. I thought 2017 was pretty good from where we're going. But again, we have accelerated this, you know, a couple of years, and it is financing. It's just our ability to do this.
I have a question. If there were other schools slotted way back from 2007 or whenever this began, why wasn't it addressed then? Why do we, why are we at this point now where we're discussing the order in which the schools are going to be built if there was a slate of schools back in 2007, 2008?
Ms. Johnson, Councilwoman Johnson, it's because years and years and years ago, those five schools were selected, even before Camp Allen. So, we've always been building towards getting enough money set aside so we can build those five schools.
These five schools?
These five schools. So, the conversation about.
The school board originally set which schools they were going to be.
Okay.
That before district, before the city took over the construction.
Exactly.
Right. Tommy, you did.
So, but, but Marcus, you mentioned something about Coleman Place. So, was that a part of, because was Coleman Place slated to be built prior to the other schools as well?
Yes. So, what happened, the school system, maybe in 2004, 2005, had balances. They had about $22 million, and they were saying, take 11 million for Coleman Place, take 11 million for Crossroads, and let's build two schools. So, that was prior to, and then somewhere in here, Crossroads became a K8 additional cost. And you couldn't build either one for 11 million to begin with. So, they were before the declaration of let's build five schools.
So, can we vote? Are we voting on the financing tonight or the order of schools?
You are voting on the, on both, because the appendix has the order, yes.
The financing, that's the one.
Yes.
You know what it mean, that if we voted on it tonight, could we still change the order if the school system decided it was better?
I think that this is what the school system has recommended. I think there is some issue as well, besides just the physical character of the buildings, that the fact that there is a, they're putting their money, like in Broad Creek, in a place where they know the kids can, can take the best advantage of it. We took down Dream Creek Keepers years ago as well, and I think there was, anyway, there is a sense that if you can get a new school there, you start getting better academic achievement. And I mean, I, I think that was, I don't know how they arrived at it, but that's the list that I, that I have been told by, by Dr. King. I didn't ever want to weigh into it, but that was the list from Dr. King and from Kirk, that's what they preferred. And I, Dr. Simmons, is that right?
That is correct.
Right. So, without any other, without discussing why or asking why, that's, that's what came back. So, that's what drove.
Well, then, you need to reopen the baseball fields down in Ocean View so that they can play next season on there. And some needs to address this.
Greenpeace.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, it's, then, you know, and as a parent who also has children at that school and knows, I'm in there all the time and see the condition of that building, you can do regular maintenance on it, but that's not going to fix a building that was built in 1939 and the issues that it's having. And I know Larchmont has the same issues. It's different than a building that was built in 50s and 60s.
And perhaps that's where the technology money can go.
Yes. With maintenance.
But I would, I would agree with Tommy, the ballpark definitely needs to be.
You want to talk a little bit about the, what's the school's?
Because they thought the school was going to break ground in the spring. That's why. That's why the city did it.
Who would have ever told them that?
I don't know where that came. So, the design team, these are great schools to work out. First of all, the design team, just as Marcus mentioned, but.
I mean, I don't want to want, I don't want to get too far down there. I know I'm getting in your business now. But if we were to advance the, both Larchmont and Ocean View, I mean, I see you're breaking ground on, if you go back to that baseline, what is the cost between if you move into, you know, if you move, if you move Larchmont and Ocean View forward, you know, six months, for instance, as opposed to the, to the year? Steve, was it a big number or is it a small number?
It's, it's on the finance side.
It's a finance, it's not the cost.
It's our, our ability to maintain our debt capacity.
Right. So, so Mayor and Council, without getting too technical, we are.
I get it, it's not a cost.
Yeah, exactly. We are restricted, yes.
It's our, how much money we're spending in what year.
Right.
Mr. Ballard would like to do it sooner, but this is, this is what we can afford, is to do it in three years and, and maintain our, our good ratings.
We won't pity on the guy.
Okay. So, again, if there's any, any question.
Marcus, is it fair to say in the future budget, if we wanted to advance these schools, we could do that? If we, if we found you money?
So, Mayor, it really doesn't work that way because we're.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Because he'll send me a bill for $30 million, and, and I won't have the ability to pay it.
We got a good partner as, as a contractor. We're getting good value and, and for great schools. S.B. Ballard obviously has a good reputation of building places that we all have memories in, frankly, whether it be the Cruz Center or the Ted, recently built Kellum High School, which is a great example of a new high school in the area. Both RRMM architects and Waller Todd and Saller architects each have experience of over 200 schools just in the Commonwealth. And so, many of the schools that you see in Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, for example, they've been part of the team for design that. The Libis Group is part of the design team as well, done a lot of work at Norfolk State. And so, you know, what, what we had as part of the review and how we selected the team, we had under our direct contract, prior to this interim and comprehensive agreement, MVP, they were multi-disciplined construction consulting firm that gave us the ability to, to review all of them. And then, both the school system and then Waller Todd had brain spaces, which are educational consultants that make, make sure they marry up, learning with space, essentially, that's their niche. And so, they gave guidance particularly on Camp Estella, trying to develop a STEM curriculum-oriented building. As part of, part of this, too, the subcontractors that we're getting, Mr. Ballard is achieving the goals that we had in the interim agreement that will carry forward in the comprehensive agreement for small women-owned minority businesses. Tremendous amount of outreach on that and good, good response and maintaining above what the goal is right now for that participation. This is the great thing about all these schools, particularly compared to what they have now. These, all these schools will have, this is particularly helpful for the instructional staff, separation between instructional administration or the multipurpose spaces, so that whether it be the 3K5s or Camp Estella, there's a, there's a similarity between how the school operates on a daily basis and, and understanding where your students are and where any potential for the public is coming in or parents. We have grade level clustering, so all the grades are in the same wings across from each other. We have collaborative project spaces that not, none of our classrooms have now that are built in so that small teams of six to nine students or so can go in this space, but the teacher can still monitor them. They all have science labs, they all have outdoor classrooms, outdoor art courtyards, enhanced media centers from what we've seen so far in any of our schools. They have individual grade level fitness and play areas, so the kindergartners have their special area, and then the fourth and fifth, for example, are in their area. We have parent volunteer support spaces, particularly all the good work that PTAs do to support the activities of the school. They all have a very robust enhanced security and camera system, which goes along with that span and control for the way that, that the building is designed. High bandwidth capacity, computer labs, no more concern about how many devices are plugged into a building like, during testing like we have in, in a couple of the buildings now. And then, they're all achieving great energy efficiency with, they'll all be LEED certifiable at the end of the project, and we'll make a decision whether we're paying for a LEED certification or one of the similar certifications, such as one that's evolved out of Virginia that, for each of the schools. Camp Estella, we've seen these images, these are the images that at 35% design that were approved by the Architectural Review Board and Planning Commission in August. Camp Estella, obviously, the, the educational curriculum focus is on STEM, and then they have the swim activity, just over, almost 1,150 students with just over 200 choice seats, 180,000 square foot facility. The architectural features of those windows highlight that educational wing that you'll see from Indian River and Camp Estella. In this facility, built around the STEM curriculum are the labs, breakout activity spaces across from the classrooms, science labs that all the schools have, and the similar collaborative project spaces that all the schools have. And in particular, for the upper grades for the, the STEM activities, there's a, there's a lecture hall associated with that. Also, a full middle size, middle school sized gym because it's a K8 school. Outdoor classroom will be located, co-located with the wetlands observe, observation area. That's a change from where we were at the ARB-approved plans. And then, of course, their, their main activity here is with the partnership with Southside Aquatic Center. Broad Creek, Richard Bowling Elementary, I'm using that interchangeably right now, understand that eventually the school board will make the decision about where, you know, the full, the full name. But the focus, as we've known it, is going to be that it's got an international baccalaureate focus, particularly with the theme of fine arts. Just over 700 students, about 1,000 square feet. There are enhanced art and music rooms, part of that IB program. New feature that the school, the bowling doesn't currently have is that they'll have athletic fields. And then, the site allows for the co-location of, of the new library that is planned in the CIP. I want to emphasize, that's not part of the PPEA package. That will be a completely separate design bill contract that we'll be working on in the new calendar year. Larchmont School, we've seen these images since August. The focus, right now, is planned as pre-med sciences, and there's also a strong performing arts. And I think the, the school system, working with the community and, and the staff there will, will work through what that focus is as, as it comes online. Just under 100,000 square feet. It has the ability to, to hold a capacity anywhere from 707 or upwards of 790 to 7, depending on how the rooms are, the rooms are used or the ratio. The architecture obviously pays homage to the existing school and the surrounding buildings. It does have expanded pre-K capacity from what the current school has. And, and we have, because of that additional capacity, we will have, it doesn't show on the ARB-approved renderings, but we have it already designed where we can have flexible use of combined music rooms so that you have that, that space that can be used when the gym natorium is being, is being used for gym. We have additional space built in for the music programming there. We've got an expanded drop-off lane that will be three times what the current drop-off lane is, so we can get 60 to 70 cars off of bowling, which will help traffic flow. Most mature trees out there will be preserved, and then ample athletic fields. And here is a, a bit of a soccer focus as we, as existing school. Ocean View Elementary, a focus there has been for the curriculum to have a tie-in like it does now of maritime sciences. Again, just over 700 students, 92,000 square feet. The architecture was in part picking up on the archdeco of the current building and then using the playful beach colors. It, one aspect of this school is built to higher wind speeds because of its location, which is required. There is mature tree preservation on site, tennis courts will remain, and then the athletic fields there have a baseball, softball focus. So, that's, that's the highlights. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know we've talked a lot about architectural renderings and about budget, but we have much of the team here that can answer any specifics if we need.
I just want to say, I think it's been terrific work. It's been a monumental task to get to the point where we can build four, five schools at once. It's been the heaviest lift that I think I've been, at least for the education system in the history of the city. And so, I know there are a lot of people still with a number of questions and things, but I, I think we've answered 95, 96, 90%, 90. We tried to deal with 97 for more percent of the concerns people have. We, each of the buildings has changed somewhat. Parking lots have moved, we, you know, trees have been preserved. We didn't get everything every single person wanted, but we got almost everything. So, I think it's been a really good process.
Sure. So, Mayor, members of council stepped up with Mr. Ballard and Sabrina and tried to see if we could do a better alignment with the schools, and it would force us to go to the market a little early than, than we would want. But we could get Ocean View and Larchmont in line. So, in other words, we could do Larchmont, which, the start would be March 2016, opening September 2017, and Ocean View, the start would be March 2016, opening September 2017. Do both at the same time.
So, you would advance them another three or four months, at least, to Ocean View, Tommy?
Exactly.
So, Larchmont and Ocean View would be.
Would be at the same time.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thanks. It helps in a lot of ways. Can you explain the security vestibles and how that works? Are they up to the new standards of, after, you know, our school shootings and stuff? Are they, how is that working? Can they be shut down? Can they be shut down? How is that, or is it just really just a barrier, just two sets of doors?
There are two sets of doors now for, for that secure reason, but I think the biggest thing that you'll see is now instead of schools having three or four mass entrances, even though they have a mass exit, we have really two weights of entry now, just the bus loop and the main entrance, and the other locks will be, the other doors will be secured all the time. So, we feel like, you know, it's far and above what, what most schools are seeing now, unless they do have a new facility. And we have put the latest state-of-the-art security systems in there where, you know, it's, obviously, you're never going to stop the crazy, but we have things in place on this design that will take care of what you've seen in the past, the double best mule, pass entry, you know, somebody buzzes you in, where now when you come in, you can't just go in, you got to come in, go through the office, the principal, and all that, you know, or whoever they have there can see what's going on and not release them into the school unless they want to.
I'm glad to see at Ocean View, it's been hardened for the wind, because won't that, I'm sorry, but I mean, for Ocean View, it'll, it'll be a place where you can open it?
Yeah, it's not a shelter.
Standard for shelter, there is a, it's a little higher than that.
Okay, what did you mean when you said it was wind hardened?
Yeah. I think it's just more for damage prevention than it is.
The new design goes from 2005 to now, you're within a mile of the ocean or the bay, the standards have gone from like 98 to 115. So, so it'll take a lot larger wind beating.
Okay. So, Mayor, Council, we had one more presentation, but I'm going to hope that maybe I can get everybody comfortable. I know that we sent it out a couple of times in your package, and I think Sabrina attempted to speak with each of the council members. Line of credit is simply a mechanism that we have that we can just spend money faster after we take care of that, we go back and we go to the bond markets and we replenish it. It's, it's actually cheaper for me than even using my own double A. So, it's just allowing us to get these things done.
All right, is that what the...
That's all that was, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we're going to need to go quickly and, we're not going to do the personnel, so we'll just do the legal.
Paul, if we have some minor things that we need to address with the schools, like, I already talked to Steve about the bell, that, like, there's no pathway that connects Willoughby to Ocean View, if that's going to be the pre-K center to Ocean View, little things like that that aren't real big expenses, how do you want us to address that?
Through, through Ron.
Or fence that's missing?
Yeah, sure.
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 Okay.
Yes, okay.
I'm with members of council, assembly and close meeting on November 25, 2014 at 6:50 PM. For the purposes set out in clauses 1 and 7 of Freedom of Information Act, and that is discussion of the appointment of persons to city boards, commissions, or authorities, and seven consultation with legal counsel regarding one matter of actual litigation in a legal matter involving a North Carolina police department accident. Ms. Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Perugia?
Hi.
Mr. Riddick?
Hi.
Mr. Smigal?
Hi.
Dr. Whibley?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Hi.
Mr. Wett?
Hi.
Mr. Frang?
Mike.